All right, so everybody is here, the meeting is, tonight is being recorded. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Let's see, so we have one board member attending remotely. Julia, if you could just state your name, your location, the reason for attending remotely, and if anybody is with you, that would be fantastic.
Hi, I'm Julia Killey in Avon, Connecticut, attending remotely because I'm in Avon, Connecticut.
Anybody with you?
And nobody else is here, just me.
Okay, and we need to do votes by roll for remote members, so I will just make sure that I call you to confirm your vote on any votes that you take, okay?
Great, thanks so much.
All righty, so let's see, starting off, we need a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of August 18th. It was 18th and the 24th, anyone wants to make a motion for all of them?
I'll make a motion.
For all of them?
Yeah.
All right, we've motioned in a second to accept this group of minutes. It's the public and non-public minutes for August 18th and August 24th. Any corrections? Comments, anything? Jim, anything? No. Julia, anything?
Nope, I don't have anything.
All those in favor of accepting all of those minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. The check mark there, all right, so then we have the review of the letters of intent for position on the school board. So we have four letters, Anne, is that correct? Sorry, we have four letters. Now, if we are going to be discussing any of these letters, let's in-depth, we'll do it in non-public and then come back out for a vote. Or if you guys have any basic questions or comments or ready for a vote, you know, you are welcome to state that. Who wants to start, anybody?
I'll start, I have no specific comments. I have no specific comments, but I want to thank everybody who submitted a letter.
Holly, anything?
Nope, I agree with Jim. Thank you to everybody who submitted a letter and gave us all your information. So, when you say in-depth, so that doesn't mean like a rationale for who we're voting like?
You can certainly, you know, do a rationale for someone that you like if we're gonna be talking about anyone in particular and might run the risk of, you know, damaging your reputation.
Okay.
We're talking about, that needs to be in the public.
Oh, all right.
Not that we're gonna like bash anybody, but even sometimes, you know, a specific comment or question can be perceived as...
Yeah, like why you don't want that could be, yeah.
Exactly.
Right, agreed.
Yeah.
Julia, anything?
No, again, thank you, I want to well extend thanks to those of you who expressed interest. I do agree, though, that's, it may be a good idea to have some discussion in non-public.
Okay, so we can move the discussion to non-public and then we just need to do the vote in public session?
Yeah.
All right, so, I mean, that's all right, right? We're gonna do some discussion, just move it to non-public?
Yep, just as long as we take the vote in public.
All right, so we will be continuing this discussion. All right, so then for now, let's move on to the update on the school, on school reopening.
So, from my view, school opening went very well, but I'd ask Joe and Anne to speak to their buildings.
I agree, it went pretty smoothly with going back to the sort of more traditional ways of entering the building, and it was nice to have open house and be able to have parents from kindergarten and first grade come, and some of the newer families were able to visit the building and get the lay of the land, so it just felt like a more welcoming sort of year and a little less strenuous on everybody. But teachers worked really hard getting prepared for the year, and the buildings looked great, the custodians did an awesome job once again, so it felt like it went well.
I think it went well in our building, too. I want to say the opening workshop days were really beneficial. We did some great work with Eric Mann on that Monday, and then at the Friday, we did some awesome work with the base program and just revisiting our mission. So I think we've got some good foundations for the rest of the year. The kids have been, for the most part, and I think Mr. Ponce would agree, the kids have been pretty exceptional, given everything they've been through in the last year and a half, pretty exceptional. And parents have been very supportive, so, you know, it's been, it's been a good opening.
Does anyone have any questions for Joe or Anne?
So my only question is, is, so we have update on school reopening, does that also encompass any, like, COVID reopening questions, or, because we usually have a COVID item, and I don't see it, like...
Wayne, do you want to do any COVID questions under reopening?
Sure, so, in my report, I did kind of cover the overall, but we're at about 333 cases per 100,000 over the last two weeks in Cheshire County, and we're 2.7% positivity, which is down from just a couple of weeks ago, still up from where we were in June. I, I believe the number of students that we had coming into Keene State College probably influenced that positivity rate, but we're still in a pretty broad, you know, community spread of COVID. So I'm not suggesting that we would modify, in my opinion, any of our protocols, because, you know, I think you agree that right now, it's, it's not, to my knowledge, been no spread in the schools, but in the, in the community, I think there is some spread. So I would contend that we, we don't change, we, you know, we met on the 18th, so it's only been three weeks, but in that three weeks, I don't think we've made any improvement. I don't think, I think positivity rates dropped about a percent and a half, but I think the sense I have is that we're still kind of on a plateau, if we're lucky, and we'll start seeing a downslide here before October meeting. That's my hope, but I do feel like, if you look around to other states, that's starting to happen. Even in Florida, for example, they're seeing a plateau now, some of the big states that really got hit over the last few weeks. So, you know, we're, we're not out of the woods.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just have one question about, if you remember, like, at our last meeting, in the reopening plan, there were, like, hyperlinks in the nurse section that I had said I didn't have a chance to look at, because we received it, you know, the day before, but then Anne had sent them out, the isolation guide and stuff, so I just had one or two questions about that, about how that supplied, if that's okay?
I may have to ask the principals to answer.
So one thing I noticed, and thank you, Anne, for sending, sending those out, that I noticed, you know, we say in our plan about three feet, which is what they, you know, the DHHS about school, but then when you look at the isolation for close contacts, it says, if you were, you're a close contact, if you were within six feet of the person for a total of more than 10 minutes. So, are we, I assume we are, but like, in the case of, especially at lunch, when they're sitting, like, when I had to ask Joe about the same table, three feet apart, so they have masks off, and, you know, so are, are we doing that as a close contact, going to six feet, rather than having the three, because I had three feet in my head until I read the stuff from DHHS?
The nurses have done a really good job of the close contact, and they are, especially at the elementary school, Elise is very on top of everything, and she, they are practicing...
So it's okay, because that caught me by surprise when I actually read it, I'm like, oh gosh, this one says six. And my other question, so about lunch, is, I imagine at the elementary school, they must have assigned seats, right? Because that's so much easier to do at the elementary school, like...
Yes, they're, they have assigned seats, and what we did is, we moved to have the kindergartners have lunch back in the classrooms. We started that today, to kind of be, because the K1 was just too crowded and not be able to spread them out enough. So beginning today, we were able to move the K kids out also, so we're able to spread them out a little bit better now, and hopefully, you know, mitigate any chances of spreading it while they're eating.
And what about the, in the other building?
In the other building, we have, the first lunch is eight and nine, and eighth graders are on one side, ninth graders on the other side, and we are trying to keep them as far apart as possible, and there's some kind of magnetic attraction between children. I don't know what it is, but it's, that's, it's work, it's constant.
But you know, you don't have assigned seats, so I can't...
We don't assign seats, we could, but it would be a huge task for the two of us.
There'd be a lot of griping.
There'd be a lot of parents complaining. When we, when we did it before, the parents complained, why are you making my child sit in this, lunch is supposed to be social time, how dare you?
So then how do we know if there's a case?
Say that a lot.
How do we know if there's a case where they were sitting three feet from with their mask off?
Usually, we're, we're both in the lunchroom, and we have usually Mr. Fleming in there, and we're monitoring who their friend group is, so, yeah. You know, you kind of know whose people's friends are, we're that small, I think, at this point, you probably know everybody in the room.
All right.
Yeah, so, and then six and seven, it's the same thing, sixth graders on one side, seventh on the other side, and then the nine, the 10, 11, 12, they're all in there, and they do associate with their, their, their little cliques.
Yeah, that was the main thing, was when I went through the DHHS stuff, I just had a couple of questions.
Right.
And yeah, and I did, I checked the dashboard today, and yeah, we do have, it's 17 cases of Hinsdale today, with 11.4% positivity rate, so, yeah.
It's gone up since I've been here.
Well, for just for Hinsdale, not the county, just for, yeah. I played around with it more today than I had in the past, so, but yeah, so, no, awesome, no, it sounds like, you know, everybody's keeping on top of it, I just wanted to, you know, because that caught me by surprise, that six feet in here. Why would they tell us three feet's okay for schools, but then in their guidance, they say six feet, so?
We've been trying to be as fluid as possible.
Yeah.
And then I've been talking, communicating with the nurses, trying to stay as up-to-date as possible.
Yeah, awesome, that's all I had to say, yeah, thank you.
Julia, did you have anything?
I'm also, thank you.
So, Joe, how did open house go?
Oh, yeah, it went really well, I felt, you know, we had, like I said, we had the K1 people primarily, and then, I don't know, maybe, saw maybe 10 new families that had moved in since the pandemic started. I'm guessing just over half the parents came, so, you know, it wasn't overly crowded, but was, was pretty well attended. We had the Girl Scouts come and try and recruit members.
They usually do a good job of that.
And Mary Ann was there doing information for the after-school program, so...
Awesome, thank you. Jim, anything? No. The only other thing that I have is, I have, last year, we, a pretty solid communication plan, and I know this progress stuff is just a little bit different, and we have had some need for messaging early on, which Anne's done a really good job at, but I wanted to just print out a proposal of some updated guidelines, you know, for communication, and see if the board wanted to go with this update. It would give Anne a couple of templates that she could work with, it would also give her some guidelines on when we would call and actually when we would not call, that's something that's always been up in the air. So I have a copy for you folks tonight, and Julia, I emailed one to you, Wayne, I think I have one over there for you, so if you guys want to take a look at it, see if that's something that you want to update the communication plan with.
I have, it just jumped out at me, because we were just talking about the DHS, HHS guidance, close contacts, I know we had been saying in here that 48 hours, you go back 40 hours prior to the positive test results, is how you determine, and, and you determine there's no close contact, wait, hold on, staff members are absent for the... When you read the DHHS guidance, close contact is if, if you go back 48 hours from the positive test results, asymptomatic, two days, 48 hours prior to the start of symptoms, so, you know what I mean?
So, so what are we doing right now? Because this messaging should be what we're doing.
I think we're doing what, what you said on here, if they haven't been in the building for 40 hours prior to the positive test result, but shouldn't we be looking at symptoms? Because that's what DHHS does, if they have symptoms, sometimes they're asymptomatic.
Sometimes you don't... The thing with... The symptoms are basic symptoms of allergies, basic symptoms, so if you have a doctor's note that said this child has allergies, I mean, and they, you know, parents have been real, I must say, parents have been really good about keeping their kids home this year, if there's any signs that they know of, of illness.
But what if they don't have a note? So say you, you know, or staff member, if somebody comes to school and, for a day or two, because they just think, oh, it's nothing, it, you know, whatever, and then they decide to get tested, well, they've been here for a day or two, then they're out for 48 hours, so we don't notify, should we? Because it's really 48, I know, it gets super confusing, but just in reading the guidance and then figuring out how to apply it, you know what I mean? Because I'm sure there are people who are just like, oh, this is nothing, I guess a little sniffle.
We rely on the nurses to do that.
To say, is Elise on?
No, she's not, she's not, I was thinking, trying to say...
We rely on the nurses to take care of that, that's their, that's their, if you want, call mission, and it's, you know...
So then we shouldn't be, then maybe the communication plan should be bigger, because if it says, and been absent from the buildings for 48 hours prior to the test result, well, what if they were here when they were having symptoms, you know what I'm saying?
So...
They might have been contagious while they were here having symptoms.
So we personally, if this is what our policy is, and this is what we're doing, I think it should stay like this, and then if Elise or Jan thinks that, well, hey, even though it's been 40 hours, we probably should notify.
Just they can, they can override. Okay, all right, that makes sense.
And I would take their adjustments off.
All right, cool, that makes sense, rather than muddy this and the other.
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Because you could make that 10 paragraphs to say exactly what it says.
Yeah, exactly, and you're still confused at the end of it, as to what you should really do, okay? Now, that, that makes perfect sense, then, okay.
Um, I just, as I recall, if I may, Elise tried to point out, the 24th meeting, that there's not like a definition of close contact any longer, it's household contact.
There is close contact in the guidance that we have, so the close contact doesn't need to quarantine, but you need to notify them. You only have, only household contact needs quarantine, but in the stuff that was in the plan...
And I got that information from Elise, directly from Elise.
And yeah, and it's the same links from the plan, so if you go in the plan and the nurse's section and click on it, there are close contacts at six feet, but they don't need to stay home, they just need to be told that they were close contact.
And the communication piece is broad enough where Elise can, you know, Elise can, or Jan can determine, you know, who that is, or whatever. You know, so it's not like very, it's not very specific, it's broad, a broad notification to the community.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point, if they decide... No, but that's...
Jim, do you have anything on that?
No, good.
Julia, did you have any comments on the revised communication?
No, no, I read it this morning, I think it looks great, thank you.
So is that something that you guys want to adopt, so would give Anne something to work with, when she's doing her messaging? Yeah. Do we need to vote on amending the communication plan, or no?
I think it would be good if you took the vote.
All right.
I'll take the motion to accept this amendment, amendment as presented.
All right, motion in a second to present the communication amendment, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Julia?
Aye, aye.
Both say no? All right, motion carries. So you can keep that if you want to, except, cut it on my computer.
All right, thank you.
And Polly, if you want for the minutes, all right. Wayne, did you have anything else on reopening?
No, I, the workshop days, I think, went very well, and we really focused on social emotional learning, we've had a presentation all staff, and I thought it was great, so, you know, I think that helped support a good opening, but I was very impressed by the welcoming of the staff to the students, as they were coming in buildings, I really felt it was warm, a place that parents should be happy to have their children. From my perspective, it went very well, and it didn't get a lot of complaints, so I think it did.
I think, you know, you know, because I'm close with the teachers, plus I have friends who are teachers, and I think the beginning of this year versus the beginning of last year, they're still stressed, but the stress level, I think, is much lower, they're happy to be back, you know what I mean? I definitely, last year was just such an unknown, starting, yeah.
Anne, that's something we'll...
Yeah.
Julia, can you still hear us?
I can hear you, I cannot see you.
Okay.
Well, as long as they can hear us, that's the important thing.
Yeah.
All right, so, update on the SRR 2 and 3, Wayne?
So the SRR 2 grant, the recovery money that was approved by Congress in December, we, our allocation was 858,280, and so far, we spent 388,736, so we still have 469,543. Much of that is encumbered, but some of that will likely, we'll have to rewrite the grant because of some expenditures that I don't see really happening. But some of the big items were summer school pay for staff, 72,000, so we had a big summer school, and it was a lot of catch-up learning, and we were able to pay all the salaries for summer school out of that SRR 2. We had hired an additional custodian, and all of that expense, 13,000, came out SRR 2. Substitute teacher pay from last year, and of course, whenever we had someone in close contact, or we had, so we had more substitute expenditures than usual, and that was 62,820 that we were able, 62,820 that we had on SRR 2. Summer professional development, we paid about 9,000 for our teachers for summer professional development out of SRR. Computer, smart boards, webcams, that was 78,000 out of SRR 2, and our copiers, which we were using like crazy during remote learning, and they were being burned up fast, 73,000 out of SRR 2. So SRR 2, you know, we're about halfway through, but we've got some great items, I think, that, you know, really helped the district for a long time, and we're really trying to avoid the funding cliff. The SRR 3, we're just starting to expand. The initial allocation for Hinsdale was 1,272,199, we expect additional funds sometime after free renews lunch numbers are in. We've only spent about 9,000 of that so far, so we still have 1,263,109 left in our allocation. That 9,000 was teacher salaries for reading and math interventionists, so, you know, obviously, there's a catch-up piece where the requests for the funds are submitted, and then it's like a month delay before we get the money, but the money is there, we just have to have each expense approved, just like we had to have the additional grant approved. So I think we're doing pretty well as far as SRR 2 and 3, and SRR 1, which you may not, you know, we've only had 3,000 left in that one, but that one needs to be expanded by the end of September 22. The other, SRR 2 is September 2023, and SRR 3 is September 2024. So that's kind of a, just an overview of where we are right now, of course, we just started kind of in the year, so the SRR 3, you'll see a bigger chunk of that money being spent next month.
So any questions for Wayne? Jim? I'm good. Julia, any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Yeah, I'm good as well, thank you very much. The next item up is setting the date for the board administrative goal setting. So I know Wayne and I were supposed to get together and try to get some dates together, but I'm gonna make a proposal to the board, all right? I would like, I would like to see the board consider postponing the goal setting until at least this spring. Couple different reasons for that. One is, I know, I don't have any more dates to give, I know Wayne probably doesn't have any more dates to give, I know he's got a lot going on, and we're putting in just a lot of time right now. I think that any goals that we come up with, new goals, I honestly don't think it's fair to throw on the administration to initiate, you know what I mean? Because Joe and Anne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got your hands full, I think, and to put new goals that might make you guys do more right now, I don't think is a good idea.
I think the goal about social emotional support tops the list, and that's what we're working the hardest on, yeah, so I think that's your, that's your, your guiding point.
That's our, that's one of our big goals, anyway. I mean, I don't mean to speak for you, Joe, but I have a feeling you're busy.
No, I totally, I totally agree, I think, I think all the goals are really valid, and, you know, it'd be helpful to just try and limit the focus and be able to narrow down where we're headed as best we can.
I think that we had some, you know, really solid goals we could carry over, at least for the first part of the year, and I know that we wanted to tie some metrics to it, and tie some actual numbers and some, you know, some benchmarks, you know, to the goals, which I still think is a good idea, and I still think that we should do. I just think that, right now, it would be getting together just for the sake of getting together, and I know, I'm just gonna speak to myself, I don't want to sound a professional, but I'm just too busy for that. So how do you guys feel about it?
I'm good with that.
Sure. You're okay with that? Jim, you're all right with that? Julia, are you okay with doing goal setting in the spring versus now?
I agree 1,000%, yes.
1,001%?
Absolutely.
All right, so why don't we just, you know, table the goals, and we will deal with those again after the first of the year? All right. All right, so discussion regarding the joint meeting with the selectmen on September 20th, I did talk with the select board chair, they are fine with the date of the 20th, and the chair and I will figure out, you know, what we're gonna be discussing. I know probably the CIP will come up, and there'll probably be some other things, but I'll get that information to you as soon as I get back to Steve.
The only way we're gonna get the camera to work is to start, so...
Yeah, we can, yeah, so we'll just, we'll just go with sound versus video, because we have to provide a minimum of a telephonic connection, which is what we have, so video is not required.
I miss seeing y'all, though.
That's okay, you can hear our lovely voices, you can picture us in your mind.
Oh, boy.
So are you guys okay with that, if I can get you that agenda later on, since I have to work out those details with Steve?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. All right, so... That brings us to any other business to be conducted by the board, does anybody?
Yes, I have, just to remind Joe, Wayne, that we do have a dog license vote, you have the information, it's not, I originally said the first Friday in October, but that's the first, so we moved it to the next Friday. Thank you again for everybody participating in that.
Are we gonna do the delegate assembly stuff under NHSPA, under the committee reports?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, at the last meeting.
Yeah, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, because I want to make sure I don't miss anything. Did you have anything else, Jim?
No.
Polly, do you have anything? No. Julia, do you have anything for other business?
I do not.
Nor do I. All right, so let's jump over to the financial report, and now I get to ask Jody.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have my report in your package, I know it's a little light, but I do want to say that today is my second day of flying solo, and I think it's going pretty well, I guess, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Jody?
No.
Julia, any questions for Jody?
I do not, I'm glad to hear it's going well.
Your first meeting with us, and it's so easy.
Yeah, that's right, don't get used to that.
Yeah, I won't.
She's watched meetings, she knows.
Especially as we start getting into the swing of budget season, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you, Jody.
Thanks.
Curriculum report. If you have any questions? Does anyone have any questions for Karen?
No, I thought...
Julia?
No, I thought it was a well-written report, thank you.
Polly?
No. I don't either.
No, I'm good as well, so thank you very much. All right, technologies. Any questions for Deb? Polly? Julia?
No.
Jim?
I'm good.
All right, I'm good as well, thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
My principals report, and I believe we usually have, this is, we can go first?
Thank you, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for me? Any questions for Anne? Julia?
No, thank you. An open house was fun except for the don't cry mom sign, because some moms did.
At sixth grade open house?
My little baby.
I might have.
No, I wouldn't get teary-eyed at that at all. Never seen me teary-eyed with my son on the news table.
So you're saying we should have don't cry dad?
Yeah.
Don't discriminate. Don't discriminate against us. I lost track of where I left the office. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Joe?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, you have my report and I did have a couple of drafts going on this and I forgot to include one piece of information about the ESSR grant. Karen Thompson and I were contacted by former professor Alan Gong of King State College. And he is currently at the Harvard Innovations Lab. And he's offered at no cost as part of his program to come to Hinsdale Elementary School and work with some students on developing math tutoring games. So he would observe the students in class and see their, you know, strengths and weaknesses and then actually design a prototype game for them to engage in to try and build their math skills better. And Karen and I have gotten some good feedback from a few teachers and with, I think it's a, it's a win-win. Dr. Gong gets his, his work done in the innovation department and will get some really engaging, I think, help with math tutoring at no cost. So just wanted to let you know about that situation because it's, I think it's a pretty strong program.
Yeah, absolutely, it sounds fabulous.
Questions for Joe?
No.
Julia? Nothing?
Nothing.
My only question is, do you need anything from us regarding these parent concerns or has this?
Well. Well, it hasn't necessarily been handled. I think we're going to end up having a difference of opinion on masks. My position is that with unvaccinated children in the building, that the masks are essential for us at this time until such time as we may be able to get a vaccination for children that many parents will, will use. So, you know, I think sometimes you have to do things, I guess, for the common good, I would say, that, you know, while it may be good for the one not to have a mask on, that there's the more, you know, prevalent thing of what's good for the safety of everybody.
I mean, so you don't need anything from us?
I did meet with the parent, I did meet with the parent for an hour and I promised them that I would inform the board of what we talked about at our meeting. That was on Friday before school started, the twenty-seventh. And, you know, we're just, we're trying to manage the situation with the mask and making sure that they're sanitary as best as we can. Giving mask breaks, making sure that they're hydrated. That's the best we can do at the school.
I, I would agree with that, I think it's, in my own personal opinion, you know, if the mask, mask breaks are happening and we're checking in with the students to make sure they're okay. Then you have to, you have to go with the policy that's set, you know, and as far as the hand washing, they have to wash today. I mean, it's basic hygiene and we're trying to keep everybody as safe as we can, so. Did anybody have anything with, any comments or input on the parental concern that Joe shared?
No, I agree with everything you said.
Jim? Julia?
Great, thanks.
Okay, good, then we are on to the superintendent report.
Chair, you have my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Wayne? Let's start with Polly. Julia, do you have anything for Wayne?
Nope.
Jim?
I'm good.
I'm good as well.
You did, I was.
I was just going to say, don't say anything.
Sorry, sorry.
What are you doing?
I kept my mouth shut when it popped in my head.
Sorry, everybody. All right, let's jump to committee reports. Personnel, I will say that we have our, regarding the requests from the middle high school as far as start time, we're still working on that. And as far as the beginning of dates stuff, the elementary, so we were working on some language. And we're looking at how the language is starting, would start kind of all that is worded now, and that's probably going to be part of negotiations. We have our first negotiation meeting on the third. And that's all I've got for now on personnel. So health and wellness?
We have not met.
Finance, budget committee?
Budget has not met yet, I don't know about finance, Wayne, when we're going to get.
Spoke with Jody and we're trying to come up with a date in October that will be agreeable to the finance committee. And of course, Jody and I would be there and might want to, at that meeting, talk about if there are other members that we want. So we're, we're meeting with the administrative group on Wednesday of next week and talking about, from their perspective, if there are any budget items that we might not anticipate. But that conversation then would just be shared with the finance committee, we can get going. If there's a day now that the board has in October. And what I mentioned to Jody is, I know Sean is available on Fridays. And I know we have personnel on Friday, we have facilities on Friday, but.
Isn't Julia the, Julie, are you the other finance committee member or no?
I think it's you.
It's just listed to me, but I thought there were two of us. Oh, was it Kayla?
It was Kayla, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess we'll figure that out in October then.
Yeah.
No, we left Kayla's spots open until the appointment was made.
Yeah, but I forgot it was Kayla initially.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot, I think maybe because you and I were business search, I can't, maybe.
Yeah, probably, yeah, that makes sense.
That's what I was thinking on my head, yeah.
All right, staff development, Julia?
We have not had any, I don't have anything to report on that.
Legislation, NHSBA, Jim?
Yes, that's also Holly, should be listed there too. So in the packet were the new proposed resolutions for the upcoming annual meeting. And, and I haven't been registered yet, correct? Okay, if we could do that, so we have, so that's official. Holly's going to be there anyway as a board member, but I'll be the delegate. So these start at eight, one through seven are continuing resolutions. I don't know if Anne has had a chance to make a copy of those or me.
Yeah, she emailed them out, she asked me if I wanted, if we thought copies, but since we don't have to vote on these, it was just for, you know, you'd like to review if you have any questions for those, the one through seven.
Yeah.
And those are ones that have been voted on the last couple of years, they're not final until they, they move to be a final after, I think it's three years.
Three years, right.
But the other ones, we have to take a vote to tell you how to vote. But these, unless anybody has any questions on one through seven that they want Jim to bring up at the delegate assembly, they, they would just, you know.
Julie, do you have any questions on the standing resolutions that Jim could ask for us or are you good with those?
I'm good with those, thank you.
So how do you want to proceed on the other ones, Jim? One, two, one by one is vote, you want to see if.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's not a, not public, right?
Yeah, basically you just have to, we just have to let Jim know if our board wants him to vote with the NHSBA's recommendation.
Personally on this round, with all of these, I agree with the NHSBA recommendations.
We had a very lengthy meeting to come up with the recommendations, so not that, not that that means nobody else has it, but I'm just saying, they've kind of been talked to that, at the board level there.
I personally support them as well.
Julie, do you support the NHSBA position, all of these recommendations, or do you want to do something different?
No, that, we're talking about the ones that Anne emailed, right, that forwarded to us that we read?
Uh, no.
The ones that are in your packet. Eight through twelve.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't have any problems with those. I didn't have any problems with the ones she emailed either, I just want to make sure, I was, make a try, I didn't have any problems with the right ones.
Basically, you have no problem.
I've got no problems whatsoever.
Things are fantastic.
All right. So Megan is getting registered, then I think we're good to go for the.
I don't think so, what do you think, Wayne, it's just telling him how to vote at the meeting?
Most boards do vote just so it's public. So if somebody wanted to say, support the NHSBA recommendations relative to the resolutions, the new resolutions for the.
I can make that motion.
Second.
All right, Julia, second, a motion in the second for Jim to vote with the NHSBA recommendations on these resolutions. Any discussion?
Can I vote on this, so I show you some lipstick?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
So they started up this week, everything's going well, summer, the summer stuff went well, the summer school stuff, for and after camp. The big thing is, and to report and you saw it in Wayne's report, is that they were able to, the funds that weren't spent and everything was, you know, and last year it was so difficult because we had less kids and, and so there was more money left over. Usually it's only ten percent that you can roll over, but we are allowed to roll over forty thousand this year. So, so that's one of the big things there. Mary Ann's working on, of course, a myriad of a whole bunch of stuff. And, and, you know, numbers are starting off a little slow, but by, I mean, by no means like small, especially in ATS, we have good numbers, but they'll definitely pick up, so. And our next meeting is November tenth, we only have to meet quarter of the month.
Yeah, that was, that was, think of that, a little while ago.
I know, right, yeah. Yeah.
All righty, so for selectmen, we was, the conversation that I think has been going around, the setting up our joint meetings. The town is still having infrastructure issues as I reported on previous. River Road is getting worse, I don't believe the fuel station is still one percent operational. So the downside is, it's costing the town some money because these were unexpected failures of infrastructure. The good side, the upside is that the town is getting money for infrastructure funding from like COVID funds and everything else. So right now, if I've got my numbers right, it's getting close to being a wash for the town. So good that it's not costing extra money, but it would have been nice to kind of use some of that money for other things, but at least we're not going to be in the hole, but infrastructure problems continue in the town. That's all I've got for that. Facilities.
Okay, so facilities, we have another meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. Wayne covered a couple of items from our last meeting, which was the air quality issues as well as Sean getting certified in asbestos detection mitigation. So those positive developments, also in the packet under correspondence for two articles that were in last month's National School Board Association magazine, actually the whole magazine was devoted to facilities, facility management. But these two were the best, so those were printed out and included in your packet. If you haven't read them, I recommend them, those are very short articles, but they're good. No, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right, let's see, let's see. Community connections. It's just that communication, I think that was more reopening and stuff than community connections. Tuition committee, I don't think there's anything, right? That's just the placeholder. Behavioral support team, Julia?
No, nothing new to report, we have not had a meeting, I need to figure out how to schedule that. See, I'm assuming I'm taking that over from Kayla, so I have been remiss. No, I know, I just, yeah, I was, I've been remiss in, in kind of trying to figure out what the, what's required from that and what the next steps are to schedule a meeting. So I will do that.
And then we have to add somebody else.
Yes, we'll have to add somebody next month.
Yeah.
All right, joint loss.
I think it's the twenty-seventh, right, we just got notice of a meeting on the twenty, twenty? Yeah.
Hold on, three thirty to four and. I've asked Mr. Paul.
Twenty-seventh, on his email, he said the twenty-seventh, so. I don't have a check with Brad to remember, but. Joy wants, I'm looking right at it, she says twenty-seventh in his email.
Yep.
But, yeah, and in the invite, so if that doesn't work, let me know. That's what I have. And that's all.
September twenty-seventh.
All right, so sisters' comments, Anne, do you want to go around?
April, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, iPhone? Jess? Flurry?
I'm good, thank you.
Kalita?
I'm all set, thank you.
Kailin Flurry?
I'm all set, thank you.
Tara?
I'm good, thank you.
Donna?
All set, thank you.
Emma? Karen?
I'm good, thank you.
Teresa?
I'm all set, thank you very much.
Patty?
All set, thank you.
Cody? Bailey?
I'm good, thank you.
Heather?
I'm all set, thanks.
All right, then I just need a motion to go into non-public.
I like the motion.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we will go into non-public. So just need Anne? And students.